Okay, I call the order, the Byrnes Township Planning Board meeting for July 22nd, 2025. Please all rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. This is the open public meetings statement for 2025 in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law of 1975. Notice of this meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Byrnes was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building Collier Lane or Collier Lane, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, was sent to the Byrnesville News, Whippany, New Jersey, to the Courier News, Bridgewater, New Jersey on January 22nd, 2025, and it was electronically mailed to all those people who have requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Byrnes Township Planning Board. There will be no new cases heard after 10:00 PM and no new witnesses or testimony will be heard after 10:30 PM. Could I have a roll call Ms. Slaman, please?
I heard absent is Mr. Ladizinski, Ms. Manduk, Mr. Sevill, I did not hear from Ms. Smith. Chairwoman, Ms. Angelo.
Here.
Mr. Crane.
Here.
Mr. Cozo.
Here.
Mr. Eorio.
Here.
Mr. Ravino.
Here.
Mr. Tancredi.
Here.
Ms. O'Malley.
Here.
Ms. McManus.
Here.
Mr. Torriello.
Here.
Mr. Schley.
Here.
And for the record, Ms. Slaman is present.
And we have a quorum.
Do you have a quorum and you may continue?
Thank you, Ms. Slaman. May I have a motion to excuse the absences of Mr. Ladizinski, Ms. Manduk, and Mr. Sevill, who have already noted for us that they would be absent today? I'll hold on Ms. Smith, she may be coming a little late since we haven't heard from her. May I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Tancredi, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cozo? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the regular session of May 20th, 2025. These were, minutes were distributed in advance, these are version number three. I assume that everyone has had an opportunity to review these minutes. Does anyone have any comments, edits? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ravino, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tancredi. I think we need a roll call on this. Can I have a roll call?
Yes. Mr. Cozo and Mr. Eorio are not eligible to vote on the minutes as they were absent for the 5:20 meeting. Mr. Crane.
Yes.
Mr. Ravino.
Yes.
Mr. Tancredi.
Yes.
Ms. O'Malley.
Yes.
Chairwoman, Ms. Angelo.
Yes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance referral, and it is ordinance number 2582, an ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Township of Byrnes, Chapter 21 hyphen 27.1, Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control. At this time, I'm going to ask our Planner, Ms. McManus, to come up and just give us a brief overview of this. Are you comfortable with that? And then we'll take any questions from the board.
Okay, so this ordinance is, is addressing just your soil conservation ordinance, and it primarily addresses, perhaps not primarily, it only addresses the administrative functions of it, or the administrative aspects. This does not, for example, alter the requirements for how site disturbance shall occur. And so what it does essentially, I think the headline of the ordinance is that it transfers responsibility to the Somerset Union Soil Conservation Service as opposed to having enforcement being conducted here in-house by the township. It transfers that responsibility to the, to the county or the, by county agency to conduct. And it, and so more specifically, it does that for major soil disturbances with at least 5,000, that are at least 5,000 square feet. For soil disturbances that are between 2,500 and 5,000 square feet, that stays in-house here at the township, both for administration as well as enforcement. And then existing but unchanged in this proposed ordinance is anything less than 2,500 square feet, it's not subject to the ordinance. And so ultimately, it is transferring that enforcement responsibility for these major projects, 5,000 square feet or more, to the, to the Somerset Union Soil Conservation Service. And I should note, it also provides submission requirements for those permits that are going to stay in-house between 2,500 and 5,000 square feet. And so the ordinance is not particularly long, but that's, those are the topics that it addressed. It's really about amending some applicability language, which I think is lesser, but maintains the, the overall intent of the ordinance, and then, as I said, transfers that responsibility. And so I issued a memo on July 10th of this year that provides a summary of that. The other thing I did in the ordinance, excuse me, in the memo, is provide a master plan consistency review. And so I reviewed the township's 2023 master plan to determine if there are any goals, objectives, objectives, rather, and any policy statements that might be relevant. And I think that there are, the township has a number of goals and objectives that speak to protecting the environment. For example, we have a goal addressing, stating to minimize the impact of development on the everyday environment. There are conservation environmental resource objectives that are relevant, such as planning and managing land use to preserve, protect, enhance surface water, groundwater quality, et cetera. And additional language in your conservation element that I think is also relevant, but again, it speaks to protecting the environment. And while this ordinance doesn't change the technical requirements of how the environment should be protected, it's certainly very relevant to the township's efforts to making sure that development's impact is limited to the extent possible from an environmental perspective. And so ultimately, I would say, I don't think there's any conflict or any inconsistency in the township master plan.
With the 2023 master?
Yes, correct.
And is this something that all towns are doing within Somerset County?
I don't know the answer to that. I personally haven't reviewed any other ordinance taken as I, yeah.
That's kind of unfair of them to ask you that question. I know we might have some questions here, so, Mr. Crane, would you like to kick us off?
Can you describe the difference between the penalties between the new ordinance and the old ordinance? Is the new ordinance more punitive?
Let's see, so ultimately, I will say, in terms of penalties, one of the things that this ordinance does is it takes the penalties that were specific to this topic and eliminates them in favor of the township penalties that exist for many, if not all of your land use provisions, zoning provisions. So the penalties in the, in the overall township ordinance, I think, range between a fine of $1,000 and up to jail time, presumably if, if somebody were unwilling to comply with direction from the court, as opposed to penalty of between 25 thou, excuse me, $25 and not more than $3,000. So the short answer is yes, they're much greater penalties in the, in the proposed ordinance as a result of referring to the township's existing penalty section.
And that's under Section 21 hyphen 65.1?
Correct.
So, so homeowner could, the homeowner could go to jail, not that the judge would ever do that, but at least it would be hanging over them for disturbances of 2,500 to 5,000 if they, if they were in violation.
Yes, just like, I think that's a, it's, that's a true statement, it's a pretty harsh penalty, for better or worse. I will say, it's consistent with the other penalties for violation of zoning permits and development requirements.
It is consistent with that.
Yes, it, there may be, I did not go through the township's entire land use section to determine if other items have penalties, specific penalties, but the, the majority of your land use, land use ordinance points to Section 2165, which is the penalty section.
That 2165 references $1,000 for tree removal? In our tree removal ordinance, it's only a replacement. Would the tree ordinance overrule the 2165?
I would have to take a look at that, I didn't evaluate that.
We don't have that tree ordinance in front of us, though.
No, no, just in general, maybe it's illegal.
So can you frame your question again?
The question, the, our tree ordinance says if you cut down a tree, you have to replace it based on schedule.
Is that what?
And the 2165 says if you cut down a tree, it's a $1,000 fine. So would the tree ordinance overrule this ordinance?
Well, I think that's kind of an unfair question for Ms.
It's, it's a legal question.
Well, then I'll answer it this way, it's not applicable because the, the tree ordinance is not for your review, so the penalty that is being discussed as presented by the planner is that there was a specific penalty, as I heard her presentation, with respect to soil erosion. That specific penalty has been removed in favor of a more consistent broader penalty that falls under the general umbrella of land use violations, right?
Yes, I would agree with you. That's also my turn.
That is my question.
Yeah, it's not applicable.
Because she's not reviewing the tree ordinance. I think it's a valid point that maybe at the end of the year, we, when we review ordinances, we often make suggestions to the town council that we could bookmark this as something that we find inconsistent. So I, I think it's a great catch, but I don't think it's my view applicable to our soil erosion right now. Is that a?
I, I would, I would agree, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to, if somebody's in violation of, wait, I'm not sure I understand specifically what the concern is with respect to the penalty for this violation, which would generally be applicable to other land use violations separate and apart from the tree ordinance, which is specific, I'm not sure what the concern is in terms of the inconsistency.
Let's just skip it, I'll, I'll try to describe what I was describing later together, but maybe the township committee can have a look at that later on. Can I, can I, can I just give a little re, education about soil erosion?
Yeah, sure.
Which might be helpful here. I've been involved with soil erosion since the 70s, and it's one of the most challenging sites in the state that I've managed here. The soil districts usually control the enforcement for most, most all towns throughout the state, is the question that you were asking, if there were changes.
Mm-hmm.
Byrnes Township is one of the few rare towns that actually get their, originally that actually did the permitting and the enforcement, now they're just doing the, the enforcement, not the.
Permitting.
Permitting. No, the enforcement. The, the permit is, is being provided by the soil erosion, doesn't it? There's three stages of compliance with soil erosion in Jersey, or, well, for at least our town, it would be this 2,500 to 5,000. There's the soil districts throughout the state that basically starts at 5,000 and goes above. And then, once you go above an acre, it goes to EPA. EPA is a whole different world, stringent, unbelievably stringent, they have multi-million dollar fines. So that's, that's the three stages here. The, our towns, or the, also a few towns that has this 2,500 to 5,000, most towns don't start this, build to 5,000 square feet. So just, I just want to give you a kind of context here of soil erosion, the, the, the three, not the soil erosion enforcement, you know, Jersey, this, this one, but that's, hopefully that's informative.
So are you asking for some kind of?
I, I, my recommendation to township committee is that they rectify that the homeowner shouldn't be, a homeowner shouldn't have a threat of going to jail, that, that, to look at this ordinance. They didn't, they didn't have that threat before this ordinance, now they do.
Because you're saying in the prior ordinance, it was not there?
Correct. It was just a fine, which, the fine at 2,500 to 3,000, that's the soil erosion standards that, that the towns were allowed to do, now that we're out of it, it's being all transferred to the soil district enforcement.
To understand, you're saying that, and that threat starts at a threshold that's lower than what seems to be standard throughout the state?
Yep, and just the other thing, so, the soil districts don't put people in jail, or even threaten to put people in jail. The EPA could threaten you to put in jail, but they'd yet to put anybody in jail for soil erosion, and they've had multi-million dollar settlements, $80 million in home warrants, so it, it's a real stretch in my mind for a homeowner at 2,500 to 5,000 to have that hanging over their head with the big boys, the big match builders don't have that, so just to put it in context.
So what I understand is you would like us, as a board, to make a recommendation, and we'll frame that, does anyone have any discussion on that? Does everyone understand? Mr. Schley, do you have anything to add to this?
No, well, I, I think Ms. McManus already said it, that the jail time provision is in the, the section of the ordinance that applies to.
Everything else.
Everything, yeah.
So we're asking them to carve out just for the soil erosion?
Yeah, I mean, there may be some other sections that have, I didn't look at every single one of them, but generally speaking, if a, if a section does not have its own specific fines and penalties provisions, it defaults to 2165, which is what Mr. Crane doesn't want to see as part of this soil erosion section. The problem will still exist elsewhere.
We, we could modify this ordinance to say, but the penalties.
That's what I was going to suggest.
Just, just like the old ordinance, and it wouldn't default, the penalties would be what's written in the, in proposed ordinance, just like it was 2,500 to 3,000, if you kept that, it would eliminate the, the whole jail. Correct.
It would, it would eliminate having it to go to the general provision. So you would prefer to have a specific penalty noting in this ordinance?
Just like the past one.
Okay. So would you like to frame that for?
No, I'll let the attorney's.
So, so what I heard you say is the recommendation to the governing body is to revisit the penalty provision to provide a specific penalty provision that does not include jail time.
Correct.
And does not fall under this separate section, which is?
Well, that's what I said, to me, it gives its own.
Okay, okay. Specific penalty.
Right, specific penalty, which does not include jail time.
Is that?
Thanks for making it just the last ordinance.
Yeah, I, I see your point, and I appreciate that you caught that, Mr. Crane.
I know, I know.
Ms. Slaman, did you catch what was written, what we talked about, so that we can make this recommendation to the town council?
Yes, I can make you know.
Okay. I would just like to have a, a.
Roll call, Ms. Angelo.
No, not a straw poll, I would like to hear, I would like a roll call on this. So the, the motion, I'll call it, is as stated by Mr. Torriello, and does anyone, and so I'll, you'll make that motion, Mr. Crane, I'll second that motion, and let's have a roll call. Is that fine?
My motion, you find it in terms of wording, my wording, it's not, it's okay.
So we're gonna add.
Make a motion, he's made a motion to refer, in state language, to the township council for the amendment of this ordinance on the penalty provision, and we're gonna, and there was a second by me.
Yes.
And we're gonna do a roll call.
Okay, Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Cozo?
Yes.
Mr. Eorio?
Yes.
Mr. Ravino?
Yes.
Mr. Tancredi?
Yes.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Chairwoman, Ms. Angelo.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of Ms. McManus on this? I don't think we open to public, sorry, it's not a public hearing, in terms of the, you know, comment. And any other questions for Ms. McManus? No, okay, good. I'm gonna move on, I had skipped accidentally the resolution that was on the agenda before this, so we'll just go out of order.
Will we also have to determine whether it's consistent?
Oh, thank you.
Whether it's consistent, not consistent, or not inconsistent?
Yes.
That's the next thing.
Yes, thank you so much. So Ms. McManus has said in her memo on page two, under the master plan consistency review, that the ordinance is not inconsistent with the township's 2023 master plan. So, do I have someone to make that motion, that we find it inconsistent, unless anyone? Oh, not inconsistent, not inconsistent, I caught myself. I'm making sure you're on.
You know, you're testing it. How am I doing?
You're doing great.
We're gonna, we're gonna approve your ordinance.
So not inconsistent, can somebody please make that motion for me, unless someone wants to speak about it?
I'm sorry, I just want to ask a question.
Yes.
Is it, is it important to note whether you're deeming it, if you're saying it's not inconsistent, is that regardless of whether the township committee makes your suggested change?
From a legal standpoint, I think they're not, they're not tethered together, that this board has two functions, they can make recommendations if they wish, but they need to make a determination of the ordinance, whether it's consistent or inconsistent.
As it is presented right now.
What's that?
As the ordinance is drafted.
I would say, I mean, because the, the recommendation doesn't have to be accepted, right, by, by the governing body, but it, it's this board's prerogative to make recommendations, but the governing body, it's their ordinance. So I would say you're, you know.
It's a vibe.
Yeah, yeah, I would say so, yeah.
Okay, so, but thank you for the question. So the, the, again, it's that it's not inconsistent, unless anyone else would like to chime in? May I, you have something to chime in? Go ahead.
I think there's items in the master plan that would tend to call it inconsistent when you have overregulation and lack of flexibility in designing four or five things that, in my opinion, would be inconsistent, I'm gonna vote for it being consistent, but I think there could be an argument that this is overburdening, you're limiting potential improvements to the community, which would be a benefit.
Okay, but despite those objections, you're still gonna say it's not inconsistent?
Yes.
Okay, well, your remarks are noted.
A lot of, it's a lot of.
So I will not ask you to make the motion, would someone else like to make the motion to deem this not inconsistent, this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ravino, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tancredi, may I have a roll call, Ms. Slaman?
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Cozo?
Yes.
Mr. Eorio?
Yes.
Mr. Ravino?
Yes.
Mr. Tancredi?
Yes.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Chairwoman, Ms. Angelo.
Yes. Motion carries. All right, so the, I did go out of order, apologies, but I don't think anyone was too bet on that. The next item would be the resolution number 2507, it's a change order number two, an increase of $6,000 in the professional services contract for our 2025 Planning Board Attorney, Planning Board Attorney awarded to Jonathan E., period, Drill Esquire, professional services contract for 2025 Planning Board Attorney of the firm Stickel, Conick, Sullivan, and Drill, in a new not-to-exceed amount of $8,500, excluding matters of litigation, including matters funded by escrow. I'm gonna read this resolution, so bear with me. Whereas the Byrnes Township Planning Board adopted resolution number 2503 on January 2nd, 2025, in the amount of $20,000 appointing Jonathan E. Drill, Esquire of the firm Stickel, Conick, Sullivan, and Drill as Planning Board Attorney, and whereas the Chief Financial Officer has certified that funds will be available in the 2025 current professional legal services of the Planning Board, other expenses account number 5-01-21-180-204. And now therefore be it resolved by the Byrnes Township Planning Board of the Township of Byrnes, Somerset County, New Jersey, that purchasing agent is hereby authorized to issue a change order to Jonathan E. Drill, Esquire of the firm Stickel, Conick, Sullivan, and Drill, in the amount of $6,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $8,500, excluding litigation. Now therefore be it finally, be it finally resolved by the Byrnes Township Planning Board of the Township of Byrnes, Somerset County, that this resolution be placed on file and available for public inspection in the office of the Byrnes Township Planning Board. May I have a motion to approve this resolution number 2507?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Tancredi, may I have a second?
I'll second.
That was Mr. Eorio, thank you, Mr. Eorio, could I have a roll call, Ms. Slaman?
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Cozo?
Yes.
Mr. Eorio?
Yes.
Mr. Ravino?
Yes.
Mr. Tancredi?
Yes.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Chairwoman, Ms. Angelo.
Yes. Motion carries. Next will be on the agenda, comments from members.
While I'm on the roll tonight, and while I'm on the roll, Ms. uh.
You're always on the roll.
In the beginning of the year, I suggested if an ordinance references a subsection, that we should be providing that, unfortunately, tonight we have that, maybe it helped, I like a communications with my concern was. We had a similar situation, not that it's a land development ordinance, but the shade tree ordinance was, it, you were going to jail for 90 days and a $2,000 fine if you cut down the six hundred tree of property, which most of the property owners could have done this for the past 200 years. So the township committee did not know that, and when that was brought up to them, no, that can't be right. When they change it, it's a $500 potential fine, but you can, you can try, you can fix it before the $500 fine. I, I think in the future, if we can get those documents, so we can read the whole thing, because most people who read that not even realize that what had happened in this ordinance was more, more restrictive than what passed, so I think in the future, if we can do that, it would be helpful.
Yeah, that's a point well taken, so Ms. Slaman, if there is a reference to other subsections or other sections of an ordinance, if we can just include those, and I'm sure if we don't, Mr. Crane will tell us to include them.
Even some like, even some like, because it's on 360, just click on it, like, it doesn't have to be overburdened.
Yeah, but that's a great point. Thank you. I would personally like to welcome our new board secretary, this is her first planning board meeting, I know that she's been baptized over by the zoning board by.
And she's still here.
Yes, and now you've had the Mr. Crane baptism, so. But we're welcome, we really are a friendly board, and, you know, it's a great group, so we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and you can always look forward to our holiday sandwich in December. Any other questions or comments by members? This is gonna be the fastest meeting on history, any comments from our staff? No. So with that.
Do we have any other applications pending that?
Oh, yeah, what do we have in the future before, you're right, before we adjourn, I'd like, we should see what's coming in case we, we have a fellowship village memo in front of us that was just circulated, is that been?
We're waiting on fellowship to replenish their escrow account before asking Mr. Good to report on that parking report submitted by fellowship. uh, Mr. Good to report on that parking report submitted by Fellowship. So, um, looking at the schedule, that, um, that matter, Fellowship Village Parking Report is probably September.
Okay.
And our, it's probably maybe the second meeting in September, since the first is the day after Labor Day. I don't know, that's getting kind of far in advance, but we have no, nothing in the very near foreseeable future as far as planning board business goes that we either have or is anticipated, uh.
Okay, is that your, um, position as well, Ms. Slaman? That we don't have anything on the agenda right now?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, so then I'm going to cancel the next meeting, but I'll hold in advance the following meetings until we know. So the next meeting would have been, can you just, uh, just look it up?
One, Mr. Slaman?
Yeah, it's the first, it's gonna be the first of, um, the first Tuesday after the first Monday, so. Any of that, I will have Ms. Slaman, um, Actually, I have it here.
The fifth, I believe it's the fifth.
I've got it right here. It is August fifth. So August fifth meeting will be canceled, pulled on the fif, on the nineteenth, and I'm hopeful that we're gonna be able to cancel the day after Labor Day, because I don't think we're gonna get a lot of, um, attendance on that day, but we won't do that yet. So August fifth is officially canceled and possible August nineteenth. Okay, thank you for bringing that up. All right, may I have a motion for adjournment at this point?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Crane.
I'll say, I'll say.